Together there in a minute. 2.0 additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. Dr. Lee, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
3.0 is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there we go. We'll split the difference there. Okay, I have Jen motioning and Rachel second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, pledge of allegiance. And we would like to invite our students from Truman and Truman Middle School and Lindbergh High School to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, so 4.0 is special recognition. And tonight, we're recognizing Truman Middle School and Lindbergh High School. And I will turn it over to Dr. Mike Stratman, the principal of Truman Middle School, to present his recognitions.
Well, thank you for allowing us an opportunity to come today to celebrate our teachers, staff, and students. So it's always a wonderful honor to be able to do this as principal of Truman. So we're going to start with our 2023 Support Staff Person of the Year, Ms. Molly Kelly. So with each of our recognitions, I ask staff to share some things about them too, especially our students. So I'll be reading from this a little bit. Molly is our ACTLAB teacher, academic monitor at Truman Middle School. She's been an influential part of our staff and is always willing to help our students find success in whatever ways they need it. Every student needs a little bit something different, and that does make her job a little more challenging, certainly. She is a true advocate for kids and exhibits a genuine care for students. Her students enjoy her as a teacher due to the fact that she cares about their success and who they are as people. She, in collaboration with many other staff, worked to find success for our students. She is collaborative in nature and does everything she can to help students be heard. We are proud of the work she is doing at Truman and look forward to her continuing that work. So thank you very much.
We have for you a certificate recognizing you as Support Person of the Year. And then we have a gift certificate, $30 for our online swag store. So there you go. We're going to do a quick picture right over here. So we're going to face Beth here, get in front of the arch.
Eric?
All right, our next staff member is Ms. Mary Rothen. I forgot to mention too, Ms. Kelly, Molly Kelly was here with her husband Dustin. So thanks for coming. Big round now, I was just kidding. All right. And Mary is here tonight with her husband Josh. So thanks for coming, Josh. Mary's been an influential part of our school community for six years. She's a leader among our staff and serves several leadership roles for our school, including leading the Sunshine Committee. And as you know, as teachers, you have a lot to endure in the course of a school year. So she leads the Sunshine Committee, which helps staff and leads some positivity within the work that we do as well. So that's an awesome thing that she's doing. And she also serves as a teacher leader in general. She has an amazingly positive attitude and, as you can see, is always smiling, always willing to put the smile on her face for her students and her colleagues. She puts the care of her students as a top priority in her classroom, which creates a classroom culture that makes kids comfortable, which also makes them easily learn in the classroom. So we appreciate that. And also willing to take learning risks. You know, when you trust your teacher, you tend to try different things a little bit more easily in the classroom. She is focused on the growth of her students academically and emotionally. Truman is a better place because of Mrs. Rothen. She is very deserving of the honor of Truman Middle School's 2023 Teacher of the Year.
Mary, congratulations. And we have a certificate recognizing you as Teacher of the Year and also a $30 gift certificate to our online store. So congratulations. I'm going to do a quick picture.
All right, now I have the honor of recognizing our Students of the Year. This is always an exciting opportunity for us. So how we go about this process is we reach out, I reach out to our counselors, Dr. Wright back there, and our teachers. And we ask specifically, give us the name of some students that exhibit our core values and are deserving of our Students of the Year. So we're going to start with Joe Horvath. All right, Joe is here with his parents and sibling. So Joe shines in Truman Middle School with his exemplary character, embodying politeness, compassion, and determination. He is known for his intelligence, reliability, and kindness. Joe consistently demonstrates a strong work ethic and a genuine desire to make a positive impact on his school and community. His leadership inspires peers and teachers. He is described as determined, patient, empathetic, trustworthy, and witty. Joe's genuine charming nature earns his admiration, earns the admiration and respect of the staff. With an inherent drive to excel academically, coupled with his friendly demeanor and hardworking spirit, Joe is poised to have a future filled with success and fulfillment. Thank you, Joe. Congratulations.
So congratulations. So we have a certificate recognizing you as Student of the Month from Truman Middle School. So there is that. I'm not sure this shirt will fit you. So if it doesn't fit you, let us know and we'll get you a bigger size. So congratulations. You told me your size. Look.
All right, next is Jada King, who is here with a lot of her family. If you can raise your hand if you're a part of Jada's family. There we go. All right, Jada is a remarkable student known for her responsibility, cheerfulness, and caring nature. She has made a significant impact on her school community through her hard work, adaptability, resourcefulness, and genuine personality. Jada's confidence and advocacy skills stand out as her best attributes, empowering her to excel academically. Her teachers describe her as tenacious, passionate, and dedicated. She approaches challenges with determination while embodying the qualities of resilience, honesty, and empathy. Jada's perseverance and ability to maintain her enthusiasm for learning makes her an inspirational figure and a bright future ahead of her. Congratulations, Jada.
We have a certificate recognizing you as Student of the Month. And then we also have a T-shirt for you as well. Congratulations. And we're going to take a quick picture right over here. Dr. Stratman can get us lined up right? I think this is perfect.
Okay, and next, we will invite Dr. Eric Cochran, the principal of Lindbergh High School, to present the LHS recognitions.
I never want to follow Dr. Stratman. That's a bar, the bar very high. What is my honor to recognize four individuals here from Lindbergh High School. We have about 200 staff members at the high school and 2,300 kids. So to narrow that down to two staff members and two students who are exemplary is a very difficult task every single year. I will start with our Support Staff Person of the Year, Andrea Wagner. Andrea is the school registrar at Lindbergh High School, so she handles a lot of our records. She handles all of our transcripts, does a lot of work in the counseling office. Her colleagues said about her, the words that they used, invaluable, our go-to person for everything, always has the answer, covers for others in the office without ever saying no, and that she is innovative and efficient whenever it comes to any ways to do things, especially when it comes to running reports to make the office more efficient. I can tell you personally that when I need something from Andrea, usually she has it back to me within five minutes. And sometimes that's even on a Saturday. And I don't even expect her to read the email. I'll send her an email and say, hey, Monday, if you can do this and send this to me. And then she has it to me on a Saturday all the time. She never says no to anything. So congratulations to our Support Staff Person, Andrea Wagner.
Andrea, congratulations. And here is a certificate recognizing you as Support Staff Person of the Year and that $30 gift certificate to the online store. You are welcome. I don't hear you call out. Dr. Cochran, you're a lot better than Dr. Stratman.
Next is the Lindbergh High School Teacher of the Year, Barry Markwart. I believe Barry, this is, I think, the fifth time or so that I've introduced you to a group of people, and quite frankly, I'm getting kind of sick of it.
The feelings.
Barry is a science teacher at the high school, and more specifically, he is known as our guru in environmental science. He actually was my daughter's science teacher, so I can speak personally to the outstanding job that he does in the classroom. He is an expert especially at bringing experiences outside of the school to our students. It's not uncommon for him to be taking a group over to study plants at GEMP or to go and clean a stream at various Missouri parks. So he really likes to try to get our students out into the field so they can put some of the things that they learn into real-life practice. He is constantly improving. He is seen by his colleagues as a great support to all of them. He was, when we built the new high school, he was on our user group and had a lot of great input on how to make sure that the new science classrooms that we put in were of the highest quality. And he is someone who just, if you know anything about Mr. Markwart, he just exudes positivity. Ask any teacher, ask any student, and they will talk about how positive he is. And every time I introduce him, like I said, like five or six times, I have to remind everybody, he doesn't look it, he's a really good basketball player. I know, I say that every single time, but he really is. Outstanding basketball player. Barry Markwart, Lindbergh High School Teacher of the Year.
Congratulations. So my fellow Kansas City Chiefs fan, I have this certificate for you, recognizing you as Teacher of the Year and then your $30 gift certificate. So Barry is a big Kansas City Chiefs fan, so we have a natural balling. So we're going to do a picture right over here.
Now, like I said, trying to narrow down 2,300 students to just two who have done some things, you know, we have so many students who could be up here, but I had to pick two. And I tried to pick two who had really cool and interesting stories, who've done something kind of outside the box to contribute to our school community. So first, I'd like to introduce one of our seniors, Elise Norman. So I will say about both of these students, first and foremost, they are outstanding students. Elise has a GPA of 4.2 for five. She is a member of Strolling Strings. She is a member of Youth and Government. And what makes her stand out in a very unique way is if you watch the local news, if you read the local paper, she did something in the last year or so that has been very unique. She was a top-six finalist nationally for the YMCA Changemaker Recognition. What she did, she and another student from a different school, put together a project to study the impact of radioactive waste on local communities in the St. Louis area. They hosted a film night in order to raise some money for this project. And she also created the St. Louis Nuclear Radiation Initiative, which is ongoing. And you can look that up, Google it, and you can go find out a little bit more about the work that she has done. Her plans after high school are to join a five-year master's program in occupational therapy at St. Louis University. And maybe, she said, if there's time, really, really busy young lady, minor in music as well. So congratulations to Elise Norman.
Elise, congratulations. And we have a certificate recognizing you as Student of the Month. And then we also have one more last T-shirt as you get out of here. There you go. Oh, good job, Dr. Stratman.
And next, we have another senior, Shay Delahunt. Honestly, it could take me about an hour to talk about the many different ways that Shay has contributed to the school community as a student. And one of the things I'm most proud of is that, without going into any great detail, things have not always come easy to Shay. Shay has really overcome a lot of different challenges, and he is a good representation of how students can persevere sometimes when things aren't always going their way. And boy, have things gone his way this year. First of all, again, outstanding student. And you see his fingerprints all over that high school. First of all, we held our first election at the new Lindbergh High School, and Shay has been, for a couple of years now, a member of the Election Judge Program through the St. Louis County Election Board. Every year, they ask me for students, to help recruit students who will actually volunteer and work at the polling places. And Shay is not only somebody who's done it multiple times, they actually tell me every year, will you please send me more people like Shay Delahunt? That's who we want. Find those kids, send them to us because, and I actually saw, because he actually was at the high school this year at our polling place, which was awesome. I got to vote there, it was amazing. And he was there, working with everyone, and I got to see him in action, working with the community. Outside of that, he designed for our open house, he actually designed a banner. He is in the South Tech Graphic Design Program. And he designed a banner welcoming everybody to Lindbergh High School that is so beautiful that we have, we've kept it, and it's now still a fixture above our learning stairs in the building. He is a member of Youth and Government as well. He is also a member of DECA, which is one of our business programs. And he won a trophy for hotel and lodging management. Thank you. He also has served on our Student Life Board of Education Advisory, and he is the recipient of a scholarship from the Bonham Lions Club. And probably the thing that was most exciting this year, and just one of those ways that I was one of the few people that knew how Shay was contributing to the community, because it's a super top secret, but Shay was our new mascot, Ace, which was unveiled in front of, like, I couldn't have told you this a week ago, but I can tell you now, because he was unveiled in front of the entire school community when we finally unveiled our senior ace, and he unmasked himself in front of everyone. I've never seen 2,300 students so excited, leaning forward in their chairs, wondering, I think they thought it was going to be Taylor Swift. But it wasn't, it was Shay. He did not dance with the fire. Well, I can't, we would tell you, but, okay. So Shay's plans after Lindbergh are to attend Missouri State University, where he will study urban planning and public administration. We could not be more proud of Shay Delahunt.
Shay, congratulations. I need to know, are you the ace that went into my office and put their feet up on my desk and was chilling? Oh, okay. Now that I know it. You can come in there anytime. Okay. Good. Maybe it's still my emails and phone calls. Congratulations. I have gotten to Shay over the years too, and all those things are just very true about him and his spirit and who he is. So congratulations. Shay, recognizing you as Student of the Month, is that. And we have one more T-shirt for you, buddy.
I don't know if I, like, hold up the paper or the cert or, like, we can do both.
Both, you can do both. And Dr. Cochran's going to get us lined up.
I've tried to guess all year. Okay, do we have any student reps from board advisories? I don't want to miss anybody. You are? We have a wonderful little bag. Would you like to come up to receive it?
Another. We're just going to give you all kinds of members.
More gunshots.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck at college. My goodness. Okay, so this is the point in our meeting where you can decide if you want to stay and attend the most riveting piece of the night, or if you would all like to gracefully leave. No offense.
None taken. It happens every month.
And thank you for coming out, braving the storm or the downed power lines or whatever
5.0 consent resolutions. We have three consent resolutions this evening. One is Administrative Professionals Days, April 24th, National Teacher Day, May 7th, and School Nurse Day, May 18th. Do I have a motion to approve the consent resolutions as presented?
So moved. Second.
Megan and Jen, any questions or comments? Other than they're all amazing people and send gifts to school of some kind, some type of recognition or note of some kind? Anything else? No? All in favor?
Aye.
That was a little low. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And opposed? No, motion passes, 6-0. All right, 6.0 is citizen communication regarding agenda items. We have none for this evening. 7.0 is communications. 7.01 is a calendar of events. Ms. Megan Vedder, you are up.
Thank you. Very busy time of the year. I know, as a parent, I'm feeling it. So lots of events coming up. April 22nd is Earth Day. Also, the Technology Advisory meets. The Strolling Strings have their open dress rehearsal that day, and the Public School Volunteer Week begins. Again, that's April 22nd. April 23rd is National School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. The Teaching and Learning Board Advisory will meet, and the High School Chamber Ensemble performs that evening. Administrative Professionals Day is April 24th. There will be no school for pre-K through 12th, 12th grade on Friday, April 26th. This is a professional learning day for staff. April 30th is the Lindbergh High School Orchestra Concert. May 2nd is the High School Choir Concert, and the Lindbergh Schools Foundation Summer Online Auction begins. Make sure to check that out. May 5th begins National Music Week and Elite 5th Grade Science Camp. National Teacher Appreciation Week is May 6th through the 10th. May 7th is another high school band concert. May 8th is National School Nurse Day, and that evening Truman will hold their band concerts. May 9th is the 4th Grade Spring String Concert. May 10th is the High School Percussion Ensemble Concert. May 13th is both Sperring and Truman Choir Concerts. On May 14th, the Finance Advisory meets, and later that evening are the Sperring and Truman Orchestra and Fiddler's Concerts. May 15th is 5th Grade Strings Concert, and then we will be back here on May 16th for our next Board of Education meeting. So music is in the air.
Thank you. Next is 7.02, report of meetings, state or other meetings, parent groups. Does anyone have any state or parent meetings you would like to report?
I did attend a webinar on AI in education. The MOSBA is doing a kind of a series on it, and so that was really interesting. One thing that I thought was very interesting from it was they asked, they went to a website where they asked people if they thought the robots were coming for their jobs. And teachers were afraid they were, but then they click and they're like, and it says, what are the chances that they're actually coming from your jobs? And teachers are way down there. So don't worry, teachers, if you're watching, they're not coming for you. But it was a really, it's an interesting series and about how to ethically use AI in education.
It was. And they gave some different programs too, like Microsoft Copilot, Gemini. They listed some different AI programs that, it's kind of neat, like, to check into. So yes, it was very good. Anybody else?
Yes, I, along with a couple other board members, attended Equity Night at the high school, which was fantastic, led by some wonderful students. And our very own Dr. Sharia Mason was there as well. It was focused on equity within secondary education and what we can do as a school district to make sure that we're reaching all students so that they can achieve their full potential, whatever that may look like, past Lindbergh. So we had, there were some breakout sessions and a lot of great storytelling by the students to talk about their own paths throughout Lindbergh and their life. And it was a really wonderful night. So congratulations to all the students that worked really hard on that.
Agree. Anybody else?
I did also attend the middle school art show at Sperring. And I just want to say that I think it's great how this way the school uses those opportunities for different groups to work together, because the Strings Program played there too. So it was a way to get more than one group of people involved in an event, and I really liked that.
There were several little art programs I saw through the notes and on Facebook, actually.
And sorry, one more. Also, the Foundation Scholarship Night was very exciting. A lot of students were recognized and gifted a lot of money. And it's always a really exciting night to celebrate the accomplishments of all the students. And yeah, it was just very exciting. So congratulations to those students as well.
And all of us attended Lindbergh Leaders this year. It was a great night to celebrate people in our district who give so much.
It was. It's always a wonderful night, wonderful night. Okay, I have one. I went to the Special Olympics at the high school, and this was the largest, I was told, the largest in Missouri. There were 350 athletes. And it was, the weather was gorgeous, so they had games. You could do softball, baseball, you could do soccer, just multiple activities. And the kids were also very, very excited. I feel like there was one other point I wanted to, oh. And I just wanted to point out that our facilities worked great, because along with having those 350 students and all of our staff and students and people coming to watch, we also had history alive, and there was parking. So it was quite an amazing time. So facilities worked out perfectly.
Okay. Anything else? We did good. Okay. Announcements, 7.03 announcements, there are none this evening. 7.04 is a review of upcoming board meeting agendas. And back to you, Ms. Vedder.
Thanks. We meet again on Thursday, May 16th at 7:00 PM for our regular board meeting. The tentative agenda items are our regular business items, resolutions for our building teachers and Support Staff Persons of the Year, our second reading approval request for social studies curriculum, and the Lindbergh Early Childhood Education is scheduled to be here for recognitions. As always, these meetings are open to the public, sorry, public, and patrons are encouraged to attend.
7.05 is Board of Education member appointments. We have none this evening. 7.06 is the MSBA report, and we will now watch the April report.
Welcome to the April edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look back at the beginning of MSBA's Spring Advocacy Series. The spring virtual meeting was held on March 13th and featured a presentation by Dr. Stephanie Cuevas, an assistant professor of education at Atala College of Educational Studies at Chapman University in California. She is the co-author of the Scholastic book, Everyone Wins: The Evidence for Family-School Partnerships and Implications for Practice. Dr. Cuevas considers it imperative to consider the significant and central role that families play in shaping the educational experiences of students. During the session, she said that although board members aren't involved in the day-to-day of school operations, there are still many ways that they can help promote family involvement.
I think just advocating for it, right? And again, really, how are you defining parent involvement, family engagement, and understanding that it is a variety of things, right? It's not just a very typical, we used to call it, you know, moving beyond the bake cell, right? That is not just, you know, families doing that. But again, something that folks that are not in the nitty-gritty of schools every day can advocate for is like, how do we get creative about developing the educator's capacity to do that? Another way is always, you know, advocate for more funding for it. Right? So I think that those are two ways to like, really think about like, well, what is needed in my local context, district level or state level? And really, how do we help both educators and families learn how to work with each other? And that's through capacity development, often being professional development and making a requirement. Like I mentioned before, and a lot of research shows that, you know, I as a teacher, I as a principal, am expected to make these relationships happen, but I don't know how.
The first luncheon learned of the Spring Advocacy Series featured an interview with Dr. Margie Van Deven, conducted by MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randle. The discussion covered a variety of topics, covering many of Dr. Van Deven's experiences, opportunities, and challenges she faced as Commissioner of Education. She explained that regardless of your role in education, staying focused on your why is key to serving.
You know, it is about serving every student every day. I mean, it just, that, you hear that often throughout our state, but it is, that is the why. And what I have found to be a little bit challenging at the department level, sorry, this is longer than 30 seconds, but it is always about what's best for our kids. And people remind me that it is, I'm much removed from that student in the classroom at Jefferson City, in those, so what can I do? A lot of times, my why shifts to, how do I lift up those we serve, our students, by lifting up those who serve them? You've heard me say that. And our job really at the department is, how do we put systems or policies in place that help the local leaders do their jobs and in a better way to better serve our kids? Help them, help our students.
Dr. Van Deven also thanked school board members for their support during her time as Commissioner.
That is probably one of the first things I learned in my role at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and working with school improvement efforts, is the critical role that our local school board members play. And I have grown in relationship with many of the local school board members across the state, so thank you for your support, for your professionalism, but also for your friendship throughout this time.
State Senator Carla Esslinger will be Missouri's next Commissioner of Education beginning in June. Esslinger will continue her work as a state senator until June 1st, when she will join Dr. Van Deven in the Commissioner's spot and begin the transition. The deadline is approaching to sign up for your district's free Emergency Operations Plan Development Tool. MSBA, in partnership with the Department of Public Safety, is offering another school safety improvement program for fiscal year '24, expiring on June 1st of this year. The program funding provides public school districts that did not participate in last year's funding program with one-year-at-no-cost access to MSBA's online Emergency Operations Plan Development Tool, MoEOP. Any Missouri public school district or charter school not using the MoEOP tool should take advantage of this limited-time offer. John McDonald, the Chief Operating Officer of MSBA Center for Education Safety, says that it's more important than ever to have a good emergency operations plan.
I responded to and managed school threats and emergencies for the past 16 years. And what I know to be true is that the school threats of today are more complicated than ever before. And the very best school safety, prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery begins with a robust emergency operation plan. At CES, we believe strongly, like all of you, in the duty to protect our students and staff. And it was with this in mind that we created the web-based Missouri Emergency Operation Plan Tool, also known as MoEOP, that 247 districts across the state have been using for the past year. The MoEOP tool, with your input, will provide you with a safe and secure, web-based, all-hazard school emergency operation plan.
Visit the MSBA website for more information on how to register for your district's free MoEOP tool. Make your plans now to attend MSBA's Summer Summit, June 24th and 25th in Branson. Join school board members and leaders from across Missouri to learn about emerging trends and hot topics in education. It's a great opportunity to participate in valuable sessions and to connect with your colleagues from school districts across the state. Also, be sure your board is represented at the June Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Summer Summit. Delegates will be electing state officers for the coming year at that meeting. The nominating committee is proposing a slate of officers for consideration, including the offices of President-elect and Vice President. You can watch video interviews with the candidates for state office posted on the MSBA website. Registration information for the Summer Summit is also posted on the website. And last, but certainly not least, if you are elected to your school board for the first time this month, welcome to school board service. Missouri law requires all school board members to receive 18 and 1/2 hours of training within their first 12 months of service. MSBA's new board member training fulfills this requirement and provides the foundation for becoming an effective board member. The training is free for all new board members. Check the MSBA website for a schedule of training opportunities, along with registration information. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in May for the next MSBA Board Report.
Okay. 8.0, Special Reports. 8.01 Cabinet Updates. And Dr. McKenney didn't meet, so he does not have any. Joelle, you're next.
I have some, and I have plus some, right? If I'm going to finish my budget on report that we got delayed with, with the storm. A normal one is we had our Finance Committee meeting this week. Kristy, you were there, you're on the Finance Committee. So we talked, of course, about what's on the agenda this evening, and we dove into taxes a little bit with our delinquent taxes and protested taxes. In St. Louis County, we had some conversation around that. Plus, we talked about some of the new procedures that are rolling out in regard to our decision-making framework request and change orders. So it was a good meeting. But what I was unable to finish up, this is real quick, at the Budget Workshop, the few slides that talked about debt service. We had already been through revenue and expenditures on the operating side, and the debt service side is pretty simple. You know, we only, we have some capital leases that are actually being paid from the operating fund. Those are our certificates of participation that funded this building and then the increased scope for the prop. We also have a certificate of participation for our energy improvements that we made early on, about $11 million. And that certificate of participation debt is paying for itself through energy savings. So the increased scope and the prop are, they are in operating, increased scope for prop are, and the central off building are being paid through operations, but that is a plan through Prop 2024 to refinance that debt and get it into the debt side. And so that will open up some operating funds for future expenditures. The other side of the debt picture, because we have two debts, operating and then debt service, is of course our bond indebtedness. And by federal law, all of our bond indebtedness has to go in debt service. You know, we set a separate levy for that. That's the point 833. And we were able to do that no-tax rate increase on April 2nd, thanks to our voters for getting that passed for us. That will support $150 million worth of projects over the next three years. And all of the proceeds from the bond issue will be deposited into a separate fund that is just for those projects, not commingled with the operating fund. And then finally, I just had a key takeaways from the presentation is, of course, that our budget and expenditures align with our compass goals. We want a balanced budget, and when we talk about a balanced budget, we look at our new revenue should equal our new expenditures, because there's other things that can happen in the course of a year, like one-time expenditures, large textbook adoption, that we will approve all the time where we will spend fund balance down. Efficiency in all operations, strategic spending is a new add for this year as we look to spend back, build back fund balance. Always, we're looking at long-range planning in the areas of staffing, programs, and facilities. Debt management is ongoing, not just looking for new bond issues, but looking for refinancing when interest rates are other, makes sense, where we can save money. And then this year, we have, are looking back, one of our major goals is to build back balances in the general and capital projects funds. And then all I had for that was questions.
Thank you, Joelle. Dr. Sparks?
Oh, sorry. On your chart that had for the revenue, it looked like, I mean, obviously, most of the revenue comes in at the end of December or January, but it looked like there was a spike again in April or May.
In May, what it is, is that protest released from St. Louis County.
Oh, so we're not going to get that this year?
Well, we are getting it. I think I have that, I might have talked about it in a Friday packet. We're actually getting triple what we normally get. Well, I think our average is about $7 million a year, and that's when St. Louis County has to release the protest on their books to the schools. It's a friendly lawsuit that's been in place for a long time with St. Louis County and the metro schools. I think at a time, there was a problem with them keeping the taxes on their books for too long, and so there was a friendly lawsuit. So they released every protest on the books in May. I mean, normally, so we get about a $7 million check in May. But as those protests are settled, those are the protests that were not able to be settled at the St. Louis County level. Those protests are moved forward to the State Tax Commission, and the State Tax Commission decides, is St. Louis County right, or is the taxpayer right? And those settlements that the county loses, we have to pay the county back. And so what we have found in the last, this last year, that there was a lot more protests. You know, the last two years, there was high assess valuation increases and really high inflation rates. So the number of protests have grown, and they haven't made it through the Jeff City State Tax Commission yet. And so we've paid back more this year to St. Louis County than we've collected in delinquent. So we'll end up in, really, we won't meet our budget in that category this year. And just the number that is on the books, we're going to get a lot of more money deposited with us in May, but we need to restrict a good portion of that, because we know we're going to have to pay it back. So it looks nice that we're getting a whole thing of money, but it really isn't ours until the protests are settled. So it's, it's one of those unique finance, school finance fund things.
And typically, don't you budget around $500,000?
Yeah.
And we decided to be conservative because of that.
Budget zero, yeah.
Budget zero.
Yep.
And that's general operations?
That is in local revenue for general operations. Yep, and I have, the history on that is we've been, well, since I've been here, it's been very consistent. We always pay back, but the delinquent releases always exceed the protested paybacks. And it's just a cycle of a strange time in the economy, and there's more protests than delinquent. And so I don't want to hedge the bets. I just want to budget zero, and I hope it's a positive number next year. So.
Any other questions for Joelle? Okay, moving on. Dr. Sparks?
All right. Teaching and Learning Board Advisory met last month and had the opportunity to give feedback on the recommendations coming out of the gifted task, the secondary gifted task force, which that work is still in progression. Also, we are in a curriculum revision cycle for science going into the summer. We are revising science curriculum, so we had the opportunity to get feedback about the various needs of families, parents, and students in the science curriculum process. For the Technology Board Advisory, we actually, because of the way it falls, we did not meet in March, but we meet on Monday, and we are touring the aviation space and having conversations about the challenges of software and how we can get the software that's needed for programming, yet also make sure that we are compliant with student data privacy, as we talked earlier, with the AI software. That's always this delicate balance that we are walking, and sometimes we have some, some different avenues that we have to go down to make sure everything is, is going to be appropriate for students. And then finally, Student Life Board Advisory. Tonight's board packet includes, our tonight's board meeting includes the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook that was reviewed through the Student Life Board Advisory and then started to have conversations. We are at the end of a cycle of members for all of our life, our board advisories, so getting feedback from them about next step work, and then also just thanking them for their two years of service as we wrap up for the year.
I was just getting so into that rhythm. I fell asleep. No, I didn't fall asleep. Any questions for Dr. Sparks? Okay, very good. 8.02, Student Reports. Laura?
All right. So I'm going to try and keep this short, but there has been a lot of stuff going on at the high school this past month, so I'll just start now. Last week, I had the pleasure of watching the senior-directed one-acts, where the seniors wrote, casted, and directed their own plays. Each one-act was amazing and entirely unique to the senior in charge, and out of the three nights the one-acts were going on, two of the nights were completely sold out. Last Monday, Equity in Action hosted its third annual Equity Night. The event was focused on equitable resources in post-secondary education. And it was very well organized. We had student speakers, club booths, and representatives from Washington University and College Bound. In early April, BAND hosted their annual Music-Thon to raise money for Alex's Lemonade Stand, which is an organization dedicated to battling childhood cancer. After 36 hours of nonstop music, the event was able to raise nearly $8,000 for the organization. Moving on to what's been going on with our high school student council, we recently won the Council of Excellence Gold Award from the National Association of Student Councils, and we earned the title of an Honor Council from the Missouri Association of Student Councils. These are both very prestigious awards. I'm pretty sure only 10 schools in Missouri got the Council of Excellence Award. And, but it wouldn't have been possible without the hard work of every student on the council. So as mentioned before, Special Olympics occurred last Friday, and we paired up with Special Olympics Missouri. Schools from all over the region came to participate. I'm pretty sure it was almost 40 schools, which is the largest, like, Special Olympics event in Limburg history. And it was the largest high school Special Olympics event held in St. Louis in the past 15 years, with over 350 athletes competing. And for our longstanding involvement with Special Olympics Missouri, our council received the Special Olympics School of Character Award for the second time ever, and only five schools in Missouri earned this award this year. Additionally, STUCO recently organized the Second Annual Teachers vs. Students Volleyball Game in honor of Quentin Lewis. It was really wonderful to see members of the community come together, including some alumni, to honor Q's memory. And as a result of the event, over $700 was raised for the Live Like Q Scholarship. Moving on to state and district competitions, in late March, we had 102 solo and small ensemble groups from BAND, choir, and orchestra perform at the District Solo and Ensemble Festival. And out of these 102 entries, we had 39 performances receive outstanding ratings, and 51 performances receive exemplary ratings, which is the highest that you could possibly get. And they will all be performing at the statewide Ensemble Festival next week. On that same topic, the statewide Large Ensemble Festival occurred recently for BAND, and both of our Wind Wind Choir, Woodwind Choir, and our Brass Choir received exemplary ratings for their performances. Science Bowl recently won their regional competition and will be competing in the national competition in Washington, DC in the upcoming weeks. And our spring esports teams, all of them finished in the top three in our region, so they will all be going to state. In early April, HOSA competed at the State Leadership Conference, and everyone, we have six students eligible to compete at the International Leadership Conference in Houston this summer. And on a similar topic, FBLA competed in their state competition over this past weekend. And we had one student qualify for the National Leadership Conference in Orlando this summer. And Limburg High School was also recognized as the top fundraising school in the state due to our yearly involvement with the March of Dimes Organization, which advocates for maternal health care for women. This year, FBLA raised over $1,000 for March of Dimes. And then two weeks ago, Adam and I had the opportunity to interview students at Truman Middle School for our board advisory, and this was my first time conducting a meeting at one of the middle schools, and it was definitely the most passionate board advisory that I've ever been a part of. I know that this year, our Student Life Board Advisory Committee has focused a lot on transitions between buildings, so elementary to middle school, middle school to high school, and I think that this meeting gave a lot of insight with that topic. We talked a lot about extracurricular activities and class structure, so the students talked about being involved in broadcast club, drum line, and student council, stuff like that. We talked a lot about the benefits of joining activities like this, while also acknowledging that there are some limits that come with having these activities at a middle school level, because they can't drive, and there's fewer funding opportunities and not as much time organized, like, built into their day to organize events. We also talked about the LEAP program at the middle school level. Students said that they really enjoyed the hands-on learning activities that they were able to do, such as like dissecting cow eyes and stuff. But a lot of students said that they wish that they were able to do that in all of their classes and not just LEAP. Overall, it seemed that all the students were very aware of the upcoming changes occurring in the district, and seemed to be really excited about a lot of the facility changes specific to Truman. specific to Truman, that'll come up with the new prop. And including, there was one student that was very passionate about the agriculture, the farmer's market. So, yeah, that is my student report.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. We all do. Not just me. Okay, 9.0, action items by consent. We have action items by consent, 9.01 to 9.010. Does anyone wish to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Or questions for clarity? There's a lot there. We're good? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items, 9.01 to 9.10?
So moved.
Matt?
Second.
Jen? Sorry. Any questions? Still nothing? Okay.
Kristi, I need to abstain from this.
Julia will abstain. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent items pass. I do want to note that we have a public gift to school this evening, and we would like to thank Tricia Soberry for her generous gift in honor of her son Carson. Okay, 10.0, individual action items. We have two this evening. And 10.01 is Limburg High School Nanatorium Pool Mechanical Updates. Did I say that right, Joelle?
Sounds good to me. I don't know how to say it either.
All right, so to open discussion, do I have a motion to approve? Wait a minute, am I there yet? Yes. To open discussion, do I have a motion to approve updates to the Limburg High School Pool Mechanical System from Jarrell Mechanical in an amount not to exceed $1,250,000, and authorize administration to negotiate and enter into contract for the same as presented?
So moved.
Megan? And do I have a second?
Second.
Julia?
Real quick, this is a project that is on the Prop 2024 list, and as you know, we're trying to get ahead of those projects so that we can get busy. The best time for us to do things is in the summer most often, but also when spaces are not being used by students. So the height, this pool HVAC, a mechanical system, if anybody's been in the pool, they know how the humidity and everything is in there, and that system is very old. It was an item, a project we looked at in Prop 2019, but the pricing was just beyond our budget, and so we pushed it off. We can no longer push it off anymore, so thank you taxpayers. But what, this mechanical system has a five-month, that's what they say, we hope it's five months. And we've had that experience of not that with COVID, but a five-month lead time on ordering. So we'd really like to fit this in when the pool's not used. If we don't get it in this time, then we'll have to push it off a whole nother year. So we would like the board to approve us to purchase this and sign a contract so that they can move forward and get the equipment ordered.
We had a motion by Megan and a second by Julia. We will now vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion passes 6-0. 10.02 is a resolution to encumber capital project expenditures, Prop R24. I will read the resolution as written, however, please note the resolution is not considered approved until after the vote. To open discussion, do I have a motion to approve the resolution encumbrance of the district fund balance accounts for capital expenditures prior to deposit of the bond proceeds? Motion? Megan? Second?
Second.
Julia? All right, so here goes the resolution. "A resolution determining the intent of the Board of Education of Limburg Schools to encumber capital expenditures in connection with acquiring, constructing, improving, furnishing, and equipping district facilities. Be it resolved by the Board of Education of Limburg Schools as follows. Section 1, Limburg Schools, the district, expects to incur capital expenditures in connection with acquiring, constructing, improving, furnishing, and equipping school facilities, the project, on or after the date thereof. The district intends to reimburse itself for such expenditures with the proceeds of voter-approved bonds or other obligations to be issued by or on behalf of the district, the obligations, within 18 months of the date of passage of this resolution. The maximum principal amount of obligations expected to be issued for the project is $1,250,000. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the Board of Education, passed by the Board of Education of Limburg Schools this 18th day of April 2024." Joelle, any additions?
Yep, I just want to make a comment that this is really approving us to encumber or issue a purchase order for the nanatorium system that you just approved. This is an attempt to be very transparent. We don't have those monies in the bank yet. We're going to sign a contract without the monies in the bank, but there should be no, there will be no payments on this expenditure. As you know, the order is five months out. But we do not have the money in the bank, so we think it's transparent to talk to the board, because I'm going to be signing a contract for monies that we don't have in the bank. And that's what we're asking.
Any questions from board members? No? Guys are all okay? Okay. We had a motion by Megan and a second by Julia. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. 11.0, reports. 11.01 for the record, there are four. Please review these items and reach out to cabinet members with any questions that you might have. The Board of Education Agenda Planner, just for our audience, that's where we schedule our meetings for the next year. Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, 2024 to 2025. Multilingual Learner Program Evaluation, Social Studies Curriculum. And this is the first reading for Social Studies Curriculum. There are no 11.02 other reports this evening. 11.03 is a review of board policies and/or procedures. We have 11.0301 Administrative Procedures, ADF-1-AP1, IGBB-AP1, and IICC-AP1 for review only. Please contact a cabinet member if you have any questions after your review. 12.0 is recess. We've already conducted our executive session earlier. There's no need for us to, and there is no need for us to adjourn to do that. So we'll move to 14.0. 14.0 is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Meeting 1596?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Board Meeting 1596 is adjourned.